I guess so.
Back in the van outside. I think it is, yeah, it sounds like it.
Will we break last meeting's record of being twenty-five minutes late?
Going for it again.
Yeah.
And I've got people that want to join, I don't know how to let them in. What do you got to switch to?
I'm not sure.
Just do one and let me try it, can you hear us yet? Okay, leave it, leave it.
I think that's new artwork since I've been here.
That's fine.
Yeah, but we need to hear them over the chamber speakers.
What is it, the painting?
Assume it's the same as that, because that was that, so just head that speaker.
Members of the public at a meeting? Yeah, sure.
All right, say something.
Is what I see.
Testing, testing.
Good, okay, now I got it.
Hey Carolyn, it's Francie.
Well, if you never know, you just call it impressionistic.
Well, but impressionistic is like light, I mean, it could be impressionistic, maybe like...
I don't know, I'm not an art person. The wrong person.
Like Monet and like...
I did go to the Met last week, so, yeah, it was pretty cool.
No.
It's tiny. It's so big, it is so big.
I did see Monet in Paris. Maybe that's the...
I mean, that feels Monet is there, and it is pretty cool to stand right in front of the real deal.
Get the one, where's it, Gauguin? No, Gildan with all the statues, it was the room that has all the Louis.
Hey Kristen.
Yes.
How did you mute, how did you make your background fuzzy?
Um, under video, there's a like pull-up menu, a little arrow up. You hit that, you can say blur my background.
Hmm, I don't have that, I guess, I just have on and off, oh well, that's pretty cool.
It might be because you're on a phone, are you on your phone?
No, I'm on an iPad, though.
Oh, okay, that could be why.
That's probably it. It looks neat.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think they pay that much to the... Didn't go to the...
We're almost there.
Trying to get the agenda back, I had it over here.
Lines and a lot of people, the other one was restricting access, that was better.
When you're gonna start your project on Creston.
All right.
Oh, background and effects. Blur. No, no.
There are a lot of people there. Probably wasn't even a busy day, but it was like, I mean, it's New York City, right, so...
Oh, I went away, there we go, I found it.
So many people!
Good to appreciate our small town.
Okay, I think we are good.
Can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
We can hear you.
Great.
All good. Hey Carolyn, uh, before we get started, I was trying to allow Kyle Buskist to join online, it sounds like he registered but was not, um, permitted.
You're all on, everybody's in, that one.
Oh.
Fraser, we have Fraser, Kyle, and Lynn on as well.
Finally figured it out.
Okay.
All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, roll call.
Filet.
Here.
Bomer.
Here.
Crable, here. Colby.
Here.
Dierwingsen, here. Bush.
Here.
Leighton.
Here.
Walsh.
Here.
Riggs.
Here.
Almquist, here. Poisson.
Here.
Hodges.
Here.
All right. Good deal.
Okay, so we have minutes, I don't have, I don't have dates here, do we have minutes to approve?
We do not have minutes.
Okay. All right, any unscheduled citizens to speak to anything not on the agenda tonight? Anybody online?
No hands raised.
If, yeah, if anybody has something to speak to that is not on the agenda, um, please go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing anything, all right, we'll continue.
They can chime in later, some amendments to the agenda?
Um, just want to note that, uh, item number two, um, is the continuation of the minor subdivision replat, so, um, it's not a new item, it's the continuation of an existing item.
Okay, duly noted.
And as, and as such, anyone who was not, uh, in attendance to the first, uh, portions cannot vote, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that is a good point, um, and I think we need to clarify whether or not they would be allowed to, uh, participate in the conversation around the item.
I can just be quiet, we'll solve that. Yeah, I think that's proper, I think that, yeah.
There we go.
Okay, got the ground rules, all right. Let's go ahead and open that.
And Mr. Chairman, before you open it, are you wanting to designate one of the, uh, alternates to vote on this matter? I think they were both here for the prior two hearings, if I'm not mistaken, and we have a quorum without them, so it's certainly your call.
Good call, good catch, um, any, any suggestions on that?
Um, well, you could, yeah, just, I, I think it would make sense to...
Six, so, but with Francie.
Yeah, I think designating, well, here, we have s...
We have six.
Six with Francie, is that right? Okay, well, actually Sarah's on one, too, that's seven.
Well, she's the alternate. We don't need it.
Salty's here, if we need, I'd say she would, she would vote.
We have six with Francie.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, so we have seven here sitting.
Right, Brian's not gonna be...
Right, right, but we have with Francie and one alternate here.
Yep.
We have seven, and that, and Salty will vote.
Okay, yeah, as long as we're designating Salty as that, okay, very good.
Okay.
Okay, uh, as was indicated, this is a continuance of the limited impact review of the minor subdivision for the lot one. Welch replat, um, the location is two twenty-three West Third Street. This is just a street view, there's two structures on that property currently. It was split previously, then it was unsplit, and now we're splitting it again, so, um, I'm, I'm not gonna go through all of the criteria of the subdivision, that was all covered in the first, um, hearing unless anybody has any specific questions. I think the main concerns the last time around had to do with the easements of the plat and, um, making sure that those were adequately covered. So, the, the new proposed plat has a shared utility easement right up the middle property line between the two structures. That covers the sewer and water, and there is an easement description submitted as an exhibit that will be recorded with the plat that covers those utilities. There was also a question about the overhead electric that goes across the adjacent lot from two oh nine West Third. I spoke with Excel Energy to a higher up from the person that originally gave the comment, and in this part of town, you may notice it looks like spaghetti. And so, um, in terms of overhead utility lines, um, so JP Affring from Excel, who's one of the senior service planners there, indicated that that's, um, most likely a prescriptive easement, and they had no objection to the plat. So there was no need for an additional written easement to be recorded, they would have obtained that permission when the service was installed, which was years and years and years ago. So, doesn't need to be indicated on the plat. So, that's just, um, summary of that, that I just said. And the only two recommendations we have at this time is just to address the building department's comment about the drainage, because the two structures are so close together, and the applicant has agreed to install some gutters that will take the drainage off the roof, so they don't fall in between the structures and take that roof drainage off to the back of the lot. And then, as a standard procedure, staff will review the plat final draft before recording. And that's all I have, and so we would just, um, have this recommended motion.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Have anything to add?
I have one, I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Go for it.
Um, if, uh, I heard you say correctly, Carolyn, that it, that it was assumed it was a prescriptive easement?
Yes, there is.
Will we be, will we be clarifying that and confirming that before the final plat is, is approved?
No, it's not a requirement of Excel, it's their service, and so they are responsible for getting the permission from the adjacent property owner, so it was confirmed by them that they have that permission. So it's not up to this plat to show that as any...
Great.
Anything in addition to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for your time, um, as you've heard, the, the name of the subdivision is the Hamlet. It's a series of lots that were previously separate lots back around the turn of the century. Um, they were subdivided, meaning collapsed into one lot, under the pretense that there was one house on the lot. Um, but as it turned out, there, there were still two houses on the lot that had just been shellacked around them with stucco. So, um, this has been kind of a, a labor of historical love as opposed to a traditional development. I purchased this property or the trusted in twenty seventeen, and it's been a process since twenty seventeen to work in conjunction with the county and then the city in order to bring these back to the, um, original footprints, original layout, and original design of the, um, homes. So, um, we've had a process to get there and, and we've gotten to the finish line. The, the only thing that I, um, you know, see differently than the staff does is in terms of the requirement for, um, drainage. And, um, the reason I don't like that is for a few reasons. The first is just, um, from a kind of procedural legal standpoint, it seems to me that, um, there's a building code and there's a, a planning land use code, and we have the county in charge of meeting building requirements. And, um, this is not a, a requirement under the building code.
If I can interrupt you, that request came directly from Chad Chadwick, who's the building official for this, for the county. So that was not a planning requirement, it's a building code requirement.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but what Chad actually said, which is in the email attached here, um, is, uh, given the age of the structures, it appears that water drainage has not been a large problem, although the raw brick was just uncovered and some damage could happen there over time. He also said, however, as they are existing buildings, that is the way it is. So, um, as this is not a building permit concerning the houses and the gutters are not actually required by the building code, it will be the property owner's responsibility to maintain the drainage from the roof. So, um, unless there's other correspondence from Chad that's not in the packet, I, I don't see that request or that's requirement. And I think that his email, um, is clear that that would be, that wouldn't be imposed under the building code. So I don't think it should be imposed in the land use process as a condition for the plat. If, if it was, I would be being treated differently than every other historic building downtown that already exists that might have a drainage issue. Um, I also think there's just, from an evidentiary record standpoint, I don't see the basis for that as a condition. Um, his email, which I've read to you, which is, is part of the packet and you can look at, doesn't, doesn't make that demand. There's no documentation of any kind of problem on site. In addition to the, the procedural and the evidentiary, um, I'm, I'm not crazy about it on a practical level. These houses are close together, they're also close to the ones on either side of them. When you put in gutters on either side of those two, um, roofs that are coming down, you have very little space in between the gutters. So maintaining those gutters, emptying them out, cleaning them out becomes very challenging, especially without damaging, um, the gutters uh, as you maneuver through the even smaller space that's created. If you create a single gutter that connects the two, um, you can't get in there to clean it. And so, there was an amalgamation of, of things there that were all failed and, and all fell apart. Um, and, and I don't think that gutters are necessarily the best solution. Um, I have a property in the River North Arts District in Denver, and, um, where the brick building, masonry building meets the ground um, in order to protect it from stormwater, um, that would go on the sidewalk, I installed an eight-inch flagstone baseboard. Um, and that, um, channeled, you know, the, um, water without requiring a gutter system. Um, I have another property, um, in Nayarit in Mexico, where I installed, um, ninety-degree, um, tiles in order to move water away from the house, but in this particular application, um, I, I don't believe a gutter system is the best solution. Um, and then there's, of course, the, the cost aspect of doing that, which I'd rather not incur. Um, what I have done in order to address this, um, is if you can scroll back to the eas, the easement I prepared. We've talked about this before, this subdivision requires an easement, it's not indicated on the subdivision plat, it'll be, um, filed immediately afterwards. If you keep going to the easement, um...
I don't have that on my presentation, I can pull up the packet, though.
Oh, okay.
Hang on one second.
Uh, what I've done is I've modified, and I prepared the easement, um, and it previously addressed utilities, um, access, the kinds of issues that we'd previously talked about. What I did is I modified it to include a provision that tracked, um, the drainage, uh, issues. So that if either property owner ever decided that they needed to put in some type of drainage system, they would be free to do that and able to do that within the easement. But I think that, you know, right now there's common ownership, but particularly if there isn't common ownership, the better way to, to handle it is to allow each property owner to do what they need to do to protect their, um, property within the easement. Is that something we're able to pull up? If not, I could probably pull it up. So, uh, obviously I'm incentivized as the property owner to make sure that I don't have a drainage problem that compromises the building, so, you know, the, the governmental incentives and the property owner incentives are aligned. It's just whether that solution, um, i- is managed through the easement process, um, or whether it's going to be um, a condition for, for the plat to be recorded, and again, I, I don't think it's a proper condition from a planning commission to impose a building code requirement that goes beyond the building code to have approval for the subdivision, particularly when you're talking about a pre-existing, um, um, structure. These two buildings already exist, they've always existed like this, and if I wasn't doing a subdivision, no one could come in and require me to put in a drainage system. So if you, uh, scroll down a bit to the substance of the easement, go up, up, um, right to the number one, yep. So you'll see that that's broken into subparts, um, the first subpart is essentially utilities, it's said in a fancy language there, but it's utilities. Um, subsection B is access to the alleyway, which is the second issue that we had previously, um, talked about. Subsection, uh, E, C is more ingress, egress, and E is to remove things that are in the easement that are, are creating a barrier. What I did is I added D, which tracks, um, the language that the, the staff has recommended. And it basically says that one other use of the easement for either property owner is to use that space as they see fit, which encompasses the two, um, roof lines, um, to reduce, uh, any type of drainage issues and to install gutters or any other drainage management impact system. So, um, that would be my preference, that it's handled through the easement that way, and I think it's more, the more appropriate solution. If it's something that I have to do in order to, uh, get to the finish line, I'll do it, but it's not the functionally best solution to the problem, in my opinion.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Mr. Khan? We may in a bit, but, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anybody online? Obviously nobody here, anybody online to speak?
See anybody with their hands raised.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, let's see.
Nothing for me, I think Carolyn, did you have your hand up?
I don't know why that says Carolyn. I don't see anybody else, anybody online, no?
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close that and open it up to commissioner discussion. Anybody?
Um, I, I'll start off, I have a question, um, for staff, if, if this building is damaged or unusable or, you know, burns down or something collapses, what, what then happens to this, like, is this a usable lot to build something else on?
Uh, well, there are two different lots, there are two different sizes, so I guess it would depend, but...
Specifically lot two, let's say lot two.
I'd have to look at the dimensional, dimensions of it and the dimensional standards, and it's in a commercial district, so there's no setbacks, so I, I can't think of anything that would preclude, yeah.
Yeah, so there's...
There's no sep, there's no parking requirements.
Yeah, there's no minimum lot size is not an issue in the C-two zone, so it would come down to the setbacks, and I think we'd have to look directly at the language around, specifically around the non-conformities, because technically it's a non-conforming structure due to the, uh, the fact that it's not, let's see, in the C-two, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get my head wrapped, wrapped, back around it, because generally when there's separation of any type, you still need to meet the building code separation requirements, um, for maintenance and, and fire safety. Um, so at that point, my understanding is, you know, if it were to, yeah, uh, burn down in a fire, if it were to be rebuilt, it would have to meet building code requirements and safety requirements at that point.
Right, but I mean, in terms of, so there's, there's no, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I'm just looking at, going, it's a non-conforming, I mean, basically, we're saying because it's in C-two, there's no set, there are no setback requirements, if I'm correct, right?
Uh, correct, correct, however, building code requirements still apply.
Yeah, but I mean, you put up a two-hour firewall, you can build the lot line, you know, things like that, I mean, if you work with the building department, yeah, I, I, my, my question centers more around, you know, we're gonna approve a, a lot that has a, you know, makes sense now, but fifty, sixty years from now, I just, is this usable moving forward, is this a practical?
I think Bill, um, answered it correctly, you know, you, you're creating a usable lot, a buildable lot, but any new construction has to go through the Chaffee County Building Permit Process.
I understand that, I mean, my question is just for staff, are there any zoning issues related to this lot that we should be aware of?
Nothing, nothing that, that pops up, I mean, it's a very flexible, very permissive zone.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, yeah, we obviously would need to, the, the only thing is, um, if they were not to do that, or, excuse me, the zero lot line, then they'd be responsible for the minimum landscaping, um, on the site. Beyond that, yeah, it really kind of comes down to what the building would require.
Yeah, thanks.
Francie, did you want to speak? Trying to figure out how to...
She might be self...
Yeah, I know, and I, I did what you asked about the name change, but it doesn't seem to have worked. Um, I have one comment on this, uh, you know, I think that what we're, what we're being presented with makes sense to, uh, take the one lot and divide it again, make it to, all of the other things have been resolved. But I do think that Mr. Khan's, his own, um, comments about putting so much love and care into the restoration of this property, um, in these buildings, it seems to me that putting up gutters is a fairly minor ask, um, and I think drainage is really important, especially when you have, buildings that are this close together, and I just, I object to putting this off on future landowners, it doesn't seem appropriate. So I would vote in favor of approving this with the staff recommendation, thank you.
Yeah, quickly, please. Well, if I could, just real briefly, Mr. Khan's, um, comment earlier about the stormwater not applying uh, to a minor subdivision to this particular request is correct in the sense that, um, the stormwater section of the code only applies to major subdivisions. The rationale behind the requested condition from the county really had to do with the fact that it is a non-conforming, non-conforming structures as far as the, the separation and, um, the likelihood of drainage happening on to the neighboring properties or each other's neighboring properties. So, it, it was a, um, it, it's not, it's not really rooted very specifically in a code section, uh, to be blunt. But it was taking into account the, the non-conformity that is created through the subdivision process and is utilized as a mitigating factor, um, or mitigating solution, uh, for that potential challenge. So, if you all feel, though, that, um, what he is presenting is, is a viable alternative to that, then staff could certainly accept that as well.
I, I agree with your description, Bill, I, I think it's reasonable, and it is not a costly thing to do, so, um, I think that staff is trying to do its best to, uh, protect the long-term future of these properties and not put something off on the future landowner.
I, I, I'm, my two cents as a builder are that I agree with Mr. Khan, that a gutter will not work. It'll work for two years, and then sooner or later you're gonna get an, it's gonna be an ice dam, you're gonna create other problems. Now, I'm not saying you should not deal with that moisture, of course, you positively absolutely should deal with bulk moisture. But I don't think doing it at the roof level at this point is the way to do it. I think doing it at ground level, like you said, is the way to do it. I also am not so sure, I, I think I agree that if, if this was like a building permit and you were asking for to, like, specifically build these two structures, then it would be a different issue, and it made, and it would be more of a building permit issue and not a city issue.
Would Mr. Khan be willing to propose, uh, an alternative to the drainage solution that we could attach to this proposal?
I, well, I'm, I'm gonna give Mr. Khan a minute here, he's been asking for, so yeah, please, keep it brief.
I appreciate, um, the, the builder perspective, I do think that this, um, isn't the right solution to the problem, and um, I, I don't believe that that was a specific requirement of Chaffee County, or at least we don't have that in the record here. Um, but you can see how this will get a little bit complicated, I mean, the, the motion as phrased by staff requires staff to ultimately approve any kind of... requires staff to ultimately approve any kind of gutter installation. That's not the role of the planning department in the city of Salida. And they're arguably not equipped to do that. And it arguably puts the city in a bad position where it's signed off on something that's had no engineering, that's had no, um, any type of, um, planning. So I, I think practically it also introduces some challenging questions. And if Chaffee County were to get involved, what would they be reviewing? There is no building permit. So, um, again, I'm not going to be irresponsible about this property, obviously, but I don't think that requiring me to install gutters that are approved by the city planning staff is, um, the best way to handle the situation.
Can we go back to, you explained the easement, the alternative you proposed.
Yeah.
Uh, real quick in summary, does it provide the option for either property owner to...
Yes.
...address the drainage if they see fit?
Yes, and in fact, they could address it on the other property roof if they needed to, because they're both within the easement.
Okay.
Best question. Uh, I just wanted to get to the, whether the planning department kind of has expertise or jurisdiction here. You got feedback from the county, it sounds like, right? Like, this may, this may not be a planning issue, but it seems to me pretty, pretty clearly to be of interest to the town and building codes.
Yeah, I mean, there was conversation around, uh, this particular issue. And this was, um, the county did, did state that because it's not a building permit...
Yeah.
...that it's not a requirement...
Right.
...to be able to, to actually mitigate this, this runoff.
This subdivision process is essentially a vehicle to incorporate some feedback and...
Yeah, and it was, it was a, a suggestion that, uh, made it in, a, a suggested way of dealing with it, with the, with the situation and the, and the non-conforming, uh, property and building. Um, but it was not something that originated from building code.
I gotcha. I mean, I guess I'm in the same boat as some other people here. As a civil engineer, you absolutely want to deal with moisture and water. But like, I, there are other ways to do it than prescribing a gutter. But it seems to me that it's of interest to be managed and, and of interest to the town and I would presume owner.
If it's not a requirement...
Correct.
Do we have the right to mandate it? I would say no.
I would say it's at, at, at best questionable.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd say it's up to the, I mean, if you want to ignore the water and, I mean, it's obviously survived this long, probably because it's dry. It's not probably very well insulated. It probably dries well. But, yeah, I would say that's kind of up to the, the owner of the property to manage that. Yeah, it's on his property. That's his, that's the homeowner's responsibility.
Or future homeowner.
Or future homeowner, yeah.
That's the part that bothers me.
Well, hopefully a future homeowner will require a home inspection. And if they don't like what they see, they won't purchase a property.
We hope.
Or under the terms of the easement, they'll be free to install whatever system they want.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, to me, the, the issue is, is approving something that takes away the ability for future owners to mitigate something differently. So if in the future someone is like, "I really want a gutter", and they have the right to do that. It's not, we're not saying by approving this that we're, we're taking that. I don't see it as we're taking away their rights.
We're not taking that away from them.
Anybody want to make a motion on this? You got feelings on how to do that?
Um, I will just, if we want to go ahead and make a change to the name of this subdivision now, as per the documents, I would recommend making that change within the motion itself.
Why? That's what it's titled.
I guess I didn't catch that whole thing.
Well, he called it the Hamlet.
That's, that's, yeah, he calls it the...
But it's a re-subdivision of Lot 1 Welsh replat.
What is the language in the motion?
Lot 1 Welsh replat. That's what the subdivision is.
Could you go down to the motion?
Here, let me show you the plot.
Can you explain that, Bill? What was the original? I'm trying to figure that out.
Okay. Could you go to those, because the actual motion language?
Oh, gotcha. Yeah.
Motion to approve Lot 1. Just, that's, that doesn't approve the Lot 1 Welsh replat.
This is Lot 1. The whole thing is Lot 1. So this is a subdivision of Lot 1.
Maybe it's the comma that's throwing me off here.
Yeah. Anyway, you can, if you want to revise that, you could just say, um, "Subject to final approval of the draft plat" and just leave out the conditions, because those, those were the two conditions.
And it, and the wording of the name, is, is that, is that important? And it says Lot 1?
Well, it's, the, the lot is Lot 1 of the Welsh subdivision. This is a subdivision of that lot.
Okay.
Mr. Khan is calling it the Hamlet, but to me, that's a descriptor. I don't think that, that...
Okay.
...is an issue.
Okay.
Uh, I'll make a motion. My, I'll give it a try at least.
You're gonna do great.
I make a motion to approve the Lot 1 Welsh replat and subdivision as it...
I think, I'm gonna jump in, sorry. So we do need to add in one word into this, because it is a re-subdivision of Lot 1 Welsh replat and subdivision, because that is what is on the plat. There was already a Welsh replat and subdivision. So we need to call it a re-subdivision to be technically correct.
Yeah, right, re-subdivision of Lot 1.
All right.
Does that make sense?
We'll give it another try here. I hereby make a motion to approve the Lot 1 Welsh replat and re-subdivision. Nope.
Nope.
All right.
If you want to write it down, go for it.
There we go.
To approve the re-subdivision of Lot 1 Welsh replat and subdivision.
Hereby make a motion to approve the re-subdivision of Lot 1 Welsh replat and subdivision?
Yes.
As it meets the review standards for subdivision, subject to condition 2, uh, the, subject to the approval of final plat. Is that... I'm, my phone blanked out on me. You've got two recommendations here, and I want to include the second one.
But striking the first.
Francie's so much better at this.
She makes it look so easy.
It's so much fun to watch.
I, I think that, that gets to the, the gist of it, yes.
Okay, yeah. It, basically including, um, staff recommendation number two, a final plat shall be submitted for review and approval of staff prior to recording.
Good job, Kenny.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the re-subdivision division. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, uh, Bomer.
Yes.
Krebel.
Yes.
Doringsen.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Leighton.
Yes.
Riggs.
Yes.
Motion passes.
If I may, in closing, I, I just want to thank the commission and the staff who worked very hard on this. Um, and without coming across as self-aggrandizing, I, I just want to say that this is a situation where, um, a private developer, the county, and the city all work together in order to restore the historic integrity of our house, of our, of our town. And, um, I just want you folks to understand that that type of development is possible and economical if it is done in the right way by someone with knowledge of masonry. I'm gonna give each one of you my card. If any of you want to see the actual structure, just reach out to me and I'd be happy to show it to you. So that goes for you guys too, if you want to see the inside of these.
Okay, I'll take you up on that.
Thank you.
Nice.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to, you ready?
Yep.
Uh, limited impact review for drive-in food or beverage facility.
Thanks, everyone. Um, looks like Carolyn, you're running the screen, so I'll just let you know when to advance slides. And thank you all for your time this evening. Thanks for working with me, as I am also home with whatever respiratory thing is going on. Um, I'll do my best to mute if I need to take a second, but appreciate your patience and bearing with me as I do this remotely tonight. Um, so this evening's limited impact review is for 1002 East Highway 50. Um, it is a drive-in, AKA drive-through, I'll go over that in a second, for a food and beverage facility. Next slide, please. Um, so the subject property is known as 1000 East, 1002 East Highway 50. Uh, this used to be the Speedy Auto Sales Lot near, um, the corner of Blake Street and Highway 50. Um, the property is zoned as C1 commercial and is located also within the Highway 50 corridor overlay. The applicant is Kyle Buskist, and he joins us tonight remotely. Um, so if you guys have any questions for him, um, Carolyn, I'll, I'll just ask that you as the host will be able to unmute him when the time is correct. Um, next slide, please. Uh, the request is to receive limited impact review approval for a drive-in or food beverage facility use within C1. Uh, per the code's definition, a drive-in facility means an establishment which provides such products and services as, but not limited to, food, beverages, or financial services to customers and vehicles. So we call it a drive-in. We, we mean that it's a drive-through for a restaurant. Um, and then per the schedule of uses in our code, a drive-in food and beverage use within C1 requires limited impact review procedure, which is why we're here tonight. Next slide, please. Um, so this slide shows you a little snip of, uh, the developed site plan. Um, this is an ILC survey with kind of site plan information layered over top of it. Um, the site is surrounded by other commercial properties and uses as we discussed on the, on the second slide. Um, the existing building onsite will be renovated and utilized for the new restaurant and drive-through. So existing structure will remain in place and all of the dimensional standards, um, you know, setbacks, lot coverage, all that kind of stuff for the structure will stay in place. The, uh, the design standards such as landscape requirements will be brought up to code as part of the building permits middle for the renovation of the building. Um, the landscape areas are shown here schematically on the plan, but will be further verified as part of the building permit process. We did work with the applicant in making sure that the appropriate, um, square footage of live cover and landscape area would be provided as part of this middle. Um, the existing marquee sign that is in the sidewalk, it's kind of obstructing that sidewalk, is going to be removed to improve accessibility. And then the existing pole sign will be relocated and used. Um, the applicant team, planning staff, public works staff have met several times over the past few months. We've kind of had this on the, um, uh, working in the background for a little while now. And, uh, we have met, including onsite, um, about this proposal. And we have gone through multiple iterations of the site plan to refine this design and kind of find the best layout which is gonna best serve all parties. Um, through part of that process, we did reach out, the applicant reached out to Colorado Department of Transportation and asked about a curb cut along Highway 50, and their request was denied. Um, which is, we kind of did anticipate that, so it wasn't a huge shocker for us. And we were able to work with David Lady Public Works to make sure that this curb cut that's provided off Blake Street is, is going to, to work as best as possible, um, for the, the given site layout. Um, additionally, appropriate pedestrian pathways will be marked, and a curb is proposed between the parking area and the drive-through lane to improve, uh, pedestrian safety. Um, I think that's all I wanted to talk about on this slide. Um, the next slide is just the motion, so, um, I'm happy to take questions at this time if you guys have them for me.
Questions for Kristen?
Yeah, this is Brian Colby. Uh, "When I drove by the property, there's an existing curb cut on 50. I'm curious why there was an application when there was an existing curb cut there."
So the, the curb cut, um, has been abandoned since the lot has not been in use for a while. And also, the, the use is changing from a retail sales for vehicles to a drive-through. So part, as part of the change of use process, they have to reapply through CDOT.
Thank you. I find that, uh, inconsistent with many other regulations where you have a, an existing curb cut and, um, that would be historically grandfathered in. But I'm no expert. I'm no expert, but thank you for that clarification.
My question, I, I believe the curb cut has to be, existing curb cut has to be remediated?
That's correct. That'll be a part of the building permit process.
To me, that seems unfair.
You mean?
That's fine.
Oh, on the, the existing, yeah, yeah.
The, the way the plan is developed, there's no access to it from 50. So why should the, uh, requestor be required to spend his money to fix something?
That he can't use.
Not permitted to use.
Yeah.
And it's been, it's been almost designated as a...
That, to me, is unfair.
Is there a good, is there a reason for that? Or is that the, is that city, that's the city's request?
It's, it's up to CDOT. They're the one who, um, who made the requirement and were kind of at their mercy as far as Highway 50 goes.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's to make the pedestrian avenue a little more consistent too, when you have a lot of curb cuts. It can be confusing to people. It's also really a barrier to people with mobility devices and whatnot. So CDOT tries to clean that up, I think, as much as they can. I'm just assuming, but...
Um, I agree with Jeff, if I can, uh, step in, that, I mean, I understand the need for it to be cleaned up, but I don't understand why CDOT can't take responsibility for that. Why is this on the applicant?
Unfortunately, I don't have that answer. Um, it's just one of the CDOT requirements that they provided to us.
So is the CDOT requirement that it be remediated? Or is it the CDOT requirement that the applicant remediated?
Um, I think through the application process, it is up to the applicant and developer to remediate it. I believe that's how the, the message from CDOT was. I can go back into the staff report and double-check.
Just another point of clarifications that we're talking about. This whole curb cut i- is not part of our review. It, our, we're reviewing the proposed, uh, plat a- as the applicant has provided.
That's correct.
We really don't have to talk much at all about this curb cut included in anything that we're assessing.
And it's not listed as a... Yeah, yeah.
Except that the applicant has, has, has stated that he would be responsible for doing that, which if that's what he wants to do, that's fine. But it just seems to me that it shouldn't be his burden to carry. And I don't know what, if anything, we can do about that.
The exact wording from, um, Dan Russen, who is our representative from CDOT, says, "The primary access for this property is Blake Street. The property does have a curb cut on Highway 50 which needs to be removed. CDOT will need an access permit for the closure of the access. The landowner will need to fill out an access permit. The access permit will allow the landowner to work within the CDOT right-of-way."
Okay, so it, so CDOT is putting it on the applicant, is what I'm hearing.
Mm-hmm.
That's how I read it, and it also links to their CO for this property, because if they're gonna need to do work in the right-of-way, um, in order to get final approvals on this particular building, then they'll probably need... then they'll probably need to meet whatever requirements C-Dot levies.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, now the reason that curb cut isn't a valid curb cut, you said, is because that business hasn't been used for a year, over a year, and it's a change of use. Well, wouldn't the non-conformance of the lot line fall under the same problem?
Not sure what you're referencing.
The su, the setback is too narrow. It's four foot six versus five feet. And wouldn't, because the building is changing use and because it has been dormant for over a year, wouldn't that, doesn't that sort of reset the clock and therefore require a variance?
So, uh, if I may, thanks Giff for that question. Um, there's kind of two different things going on here. And, uh, the Highway fifty corridor overlay is what kicks in when a change of use is required or is happening on a property. And within the Highway fifty corridor overlay, there is a requirement in our code that they must reach out to C-Dot for any Highway fifty access. So it's specific to the C-Dot and change of use, whereas the dimensional standards are kind of like elsewhere in the code, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but, but C-Dot has nothing to do with, with setbacks.
Correct.
I mean, Mike, and I'd certainly be willing to grant the variance, but do, does a separate variance meeting and approval need to be required? Is, is one required for this?
No, not, uh, because now we're talking about the building, the non-conforming building
Correct.
that exists prior, so, um, we can certainly approve something that's already existing without going through the variance process.
Alright.
If they were modifying, uh, or, or...
Tearing it down.
Tearing it down and building a backup, that's a different story.
Any other questions before we move to the applicant? Is the applicant online and ready to go?
They're online. Let's see, Kyle, did you want to say anything? I don't see any hands up.
Yeah, I have...
Uh, Carolyn, you might need to un, unmute him on your side as the host. I'm not able to do that as a panelist.
And then Kyle, looks like you are, yep, there we go.
Okay, you can talk now.
Yeah, I don't have much to say about it other than, uh, answering any questions you guys might have about the project.
How, what is the total seating capacity?
You know, I'm not exactly sure yet. I'm still, uh, I'm waiting to get through this approval on this. Um, but it's gonna be roughly about four hundred square feet of inside seating with a small patio that you can kind of see on that site plan.
Yeah, I saw that, but I can't see what's, what's gonna be inside.
Yeah, uh, there's a, a line drawn through it that you can see that's, uh, the square footage of the dining room. Um, you're gonna have a counter for ordering, so I'm thinking, um, anywhere from thirty to forty, forty-five seats inside. Uh, outside it has, uh, four, eight, twelve, sixteen, eighteen, but I don't really see that being, I feel like it's pretty small for that many people. Um, the, the majority of the revenue that's gonna be coming in is gonna be through that drive-through there. We'll probably see about seventy percent of the revenue come through the drive-through.
Any other questions for the applicant if he doesn't have a presentation?
Okay. Um, I have one.
Yeah.
Have you, have you done any studies or do you have any expectation on how much traffic you see, um, coming in, like flowing through this restaurant?
You know, um, I have done a lot of research on that. I can't say how many cars. You know, I haven't figured out a total count of how many cars that I'm hoping to seat through. Um, I'm hoping first year that will be right around a million dollars in sales. I don't know if that helps give you an idea. Um, but again, until we actually do it, who's to say what we actually do? It could be one and a half million, it could be half a million, who knows? I've, I've definitely started working on some projections.
And to elaborate a little bit on that as well, um, the code does require a queuing space for three vehicles, the length of three vehicles, and you can kind of see that if you, if you're able to zoom in at all on this, um, uh, site plan, there is a food order kind of like catty-cornered that's southeast corner of the building, and then the three vehicles are stacking inside that space.
Yeah, I, I guess so. Uh, I, I might be jumping the gun in terms of staff questions, but I, is now an appropriate time to discuss that? Or Greg, what do you?
Um, I think if the, if the app, if you're, we should clean house a little. If the applicant's done, we should go to some input if, and then we could get to discussion, I think. So if the applicant has nothing else to add, we can stick around. We may have a question, but I think we should go to public input if we have any.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to say and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody online?
Lynn, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, wish you the best of luck and, um, will there be bagels?
Uh, there will not be bagels, but there'll be chicken fingers and french fries.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure the guys, uh, next door will be very happy with that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
That's classic. Awesome. Love it. Um, okay, now we can move, let's move to discussion, and Kenny, did you want to start with, did you have a question?
Um, I have, I guess I have a discussion point or something that maybe I'm looking for a little more clarification on. Um, I mean, this sounds like the type of drive-through that would be really popular and, I mean, successful. Um, I used to live down the street from one, a, a chicken, like a fried chicken restaurant that was a drive-through primarily, and it was on a state highway, and it typically, we would have a queue of cars. You know, in this case, it would be on fifty lined up, taking over that right-hand intersection.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it, based on this site plan, it doesn't seem like there's, it seems like normal time periods might be fine, but it seems like during popular times of the day, it's gonna queue out pretty quickly out into the highway. I'm not, I'm, I'm also not a traffic expert, so I'm not, you know, I can easily be convinced to support this, but I don't know, that's kind of the big question I have in looking at this concept or proposal.
Yeah, that's, um, it's been a big concern, um, of David Ladies at Public Works and City of Slida. Um, that's part of the reason, um, on that lower left side, you kind of see that curb go so far from fifty into Blake Street is try to help mitigate that. Um, we'll definitely try to push, you know, people coming in from the Blake Street side. Um, but yes, it's been a concern of mine too, because I don't want to do anything to upset C-Dot.
I'll also add too that I think I calculated that only two parking spaces would be required for this, um, current, for the current layout. Uh, would be confirmed at building permit stage, but they are providing five. Um, so there is excess parking provided onsite, which is, uh, helpful as well.
But, okay, I mean, I, I guess I, I'm looking at this and I see three car, like, a line of three cars. After three cars, we have cars in, on fifty. Is that correct?
Yeah, you have at least three till you get to fifty.
Yeah, so you got three, you got three people, but...
Until the guy with a camper tries to pull him out.
Right.
Kristen, did you have any conversations when you're out onsite potentially with, uh, David Lady regarding, uh, signage that may be required so that nobody is blocking the egress, ingress, egress for the parking area and/or anything else there around the corner? Because that may be another option, um, to add, uh, signage that says, "Do not block that particular intersection to allow cars in and out," and, um, that would, you know, basically require folks to move along if there was not space available for them in the queue.
We did not specifically discuss that, but I do think that that's something that, yeah, we could run by David Lady.
Yeah, I think it's kind of interesting to, you know, to judge the, the queue, you know, from a, you know, my, my experience in McDonald's land, if there's more than three or four people waiting, I don't go. I just don't wait. I go somewhere else.
You haven't paid any attention to the McDonald's on fifty.
I don't go there.
Well, he doesn't go there.
I don't go there very frequently, but, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna wait in line.
There are often more people.
But, you know, it is, it is an interesting question from a signage, you know, where do people queue, you know, during rush hour? And certainly you don't want them on fifty, you know, and that creates more of a hazard. I actually like the fact that the drive-through is on Blake versus fifty. You know, I think that's smart business as well. Um, I, and I'm not an expert on traffic, but somebody else, do you want to figure out where to queue?
Sometimes people that, that, um, are in line on any drive-through, uh, if their order is delayed, they'll be asked to pull up or pull over, and staff will bring the food out to them. So I think there's other ways to handle other than just sitting in the car waiting, if that in fact is the concern. Um, it is a, it is a congested area, so that's something to be concerned with, but I think there's extra parking places that Kristen pointed out could be very helpful in that situation.
Yep.
How good's your chicken?
It's gonna be good, man. That's for sure.
Multiple dipping sauces, I mean.
What's the coleslaw, man?
Do I read this correct that Blake Street is seventeen feet wide?
Yeah, so that's, uh, one thing that, uh, when I spoke with C-Dot about the whole, um, you know, Highway fifty thing, his suggestion on Google Maps, looking at Blake Street, um, where left is the gas station, right would be the chicken finger shop. He was suggesting, and this would be you guys at some point maybe, um, that there's enough space, uh, with it being wide, that on the right side you could have cars coming from fifty going down Blake Street, and on the left side you would have cars coming from Blake Street towards Highway fifty, and that in the mid, middle, that there would probably be enough space for a turning lane in, um, to the chicken finger spot. That could be like kind of a waiting area that would help, uh, not back up Highway fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, also, I think what is being called out as seventeen foot is, uh, the distance between underground lines in the street. That's not the right-of-way width. The right-of-way width is like sixty-five or seventy feet.
Okay, got it.
It's gonna be wider than seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
Uh-huh.
I will make a motion to approve the drive-in food or beverage facility use at one zero zero two East Highway fifty as it meets the limited impact review standards.
Second. Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the limited impact review. Any further discussion?
Bomer?
Yes.
Crable?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Dorringson?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Leighton?
No.
Uh, motion passes. I did.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Colby, we didn't have rigs on this one.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you so much. You guys take care. Pretty good everything. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, updates?
Um, I'm still kind of getting my head back together. I just got in, back into town late last night, so apologies for that. But, um, did manage to get all of the edits and comments for the land use code off to, uh, Clarion just prior to my departure. They are busy putting together all that. We plan to try to connect this week on some outstanding issues before they, uh, finish up the public draft that we hope to have available by the end of this month, um, that we'll be able to put onto our website sometime early in April at this point. And as I believe I may be mentioned to this group at the last time, but if I didn't, uh, we do have a, um, public presentation on the land use code currently scheduled for April twenty-second. That's a Tuesday evening, I believe. Um, yeah, it is Earth Day indeed, and it is going to be over at the steam plant. Um, it's gonna be in a format primarily presentation to kind of point out the, the biggest changes and, and, uh, new items within the land use code. But, uh, the current idea is also, uh, spread it out a little bit, have some stations with some of the more, the larger issues, um, for people to come and talk to individuals about and provide a little bit of feedback. But then, um, we'll be devising a survey of, of sorts to, to go out, um, for the general public to, to provide, uh, comments on, uh, commentary on, so...
So is a, is a full draft available, and maybe you already said that?
Not yet. No, no, we hope to have that by the end, well, really by the end of this week, beginning of next, and then it'll go live within a week or so of that date once we have it. That's the plan right now. We want to have it out to the public a minimum of one week, hopefully two, before the presentation.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Um, what else? Oh, we're bringing on a, a new planning technician to, uh, replace John. We've hired a gentleman, um, named Tommy Sherwood, who some of you might know. And, uh, he comes from some building and engineering backgrounds. Um, we're excited to have him. Kind of had a little, uh, cultural flair as well. He's got a pretty thick Scottish accent. Um, that'll be kind of fun. And, uh, he come, he joins us next Wednesday, the second, I believe that is. And, uh, so we'll be working on trying to get him, uh, onboarded and, and caught up with everything, uh, that he's gonna need to know moving forward. Obviously, that training takes a while, but, um, we look forward to having him, having him on, onboard. We need the help. We need the hands, so...
Well, I'll be in Scotland when he comes onboard next month.
How appropriate.
Well, how are you?
Um, that's pretty much what I have. Carolyn or Kristen, do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Yeah, we're definitely looking forward to, Tommy has a background in construction, working with kind of custom home builders, and he's, I think he's got some engineering background with AutoCAD and GIS and things like that, so...
Right.
We're expecting him to hit the ground running. I told him, "You'll get the first week and after that, you're on your own."
Did you guys spend your grant money on First MD or whatever you're gonna do?
Um, we are, uh, in the midst of updating that grant contract, um, both to, uh, expand the scope a little bit of what we were doing, because initially it was gonna be, um, spent on infrastructure and foundational work. We're not at that point just yet, um, to be able to do that. And really, you don't want to, you don't want to build a foundation and then have it sit around for a number of years, like we've seen in some other locations. Um, so we're trying to expand the scope to, uh, include mechanical items and, uh, doors and windows and things that we can use to expend that entire amount. Um, and they've given us an opportunity, also asked to reduce our, our match. So we're in the process of doing that right now. Getting, and we still have to get some funds.
Sounds good. You're not losing your grant. You're gonna find a way to use it.
We're gonna, it looks like we're gonna be able to, to use it and then hold on to that, those materials while we accumulate the other funds, so... Um, I would suspect that the three grants that we were really looking at all got, um, their notice, um, for application in the last month. And, uh, one of them actually was due last week that Art Space put in for, and then the next ones are over the next couple of months. So we should have information on whether the grants get awarded by, I'd say, midsummer. And, um, at that point, Art Space will be able to determine whether or not they can pull the trigger and go forward, um, or if they need to look for additional funding sources. So, keeping our fingers crossed, they do look pretty good. They look pretty much almost tailor-made for this project.
What about Fanamere?
Uh, that continues to move forward with the design. There's needed, uh, you know, once you get all the survey information and like get it really down to like the, you know, one-foot contours and, and all the topography, um, other factors that play into the design for infrastructure... um, other factors that play into the design for infrastructure, you start to see where, um, the original idealized plating needs to be tweaked. And so that's what they're doing right now. They have a, a pretty good baseline design. Um, but the lots that were originally put together by the architects do need to get tweaked a little bit and we're trying to figure out how to do that while still being able to make the project economical. Um, so it's, it's moving along. Um, we do hope to have a final design, um, sometime this summer so that we can put it out to bid. So that's for the infrastructure for phase one. And then we'll be talking around the strategies for actual development here, um, in the coming months. So it's a slow process, but it is moving, fortunately.
Cause that's new business, unfinished business?
Something like that.
In the realm of the.
Yeah, I think you, you might've had something as well.
I, yeah, I just had a, and I was, I wanted to kinda bring it up here. I had a question for, kinda for clarification. I've been getting a couple of questions from designers and architects on setbacks, um, and cladding. So as far as where we, where buildings need to be, how thick the cladding can be or if that, and if your setback is to the cladding or to the foundation? So like, for example, and I had a, I had a conversation with this, I think with Catherine before she had left and she had asked, and we were, we had talked about what's an appropriate kinda buffer for that. Um, and I had said four inches and she had said, I was thinking even six. So one of the, for, you know, one of the ways that I achieve the new code and have built for years is to put exterior foam on my, on my home. So I have like an inch and a half or two inches of foam and then cladding. So I'm adding, you know, possibly three inches to the outside. And if I have to take away that three inches and then dimensions become silly and we're, we're shrinking buildings and then, so.
I, sorry, the, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I think I might know why this is coming up. Um, and I wonder if it has a little bit to do with, um, interpretations. But setback as defined by our current code says the face of a building or structure. Um, and so I think it's, I think it's to the face of the, like the finish face of the structure. And are it, like, I'm just trying to understand your question exactly. Um, are you asking, is it from the structure like the stud or the foundation wall versus the finish? Is that where your question is kinda?
Yeah, I mean, I, uh, we've, I mean, it's always been understood that it's to face of foundation. What's in the ground, coming out of the ground. And then how you do your wall above, whether that encroaches a little bit has never really been an issue.
Yeah, typically it's to the foundation.
Yeah, so to the foundation and then, you know, obviously you can't overhang your wall six inches. But there's, you know, yeah. So I don't know if we need to address this to.
You know, there's, there's the language of the code and then there's practicality. And, you know, I believe, uh, we, to be honest, are generally not out there taking a tape measure, um, to the lot line, which isn't even generally, uh, roped off or anything else. Um, but we will go out and do an approximate look or even a footstep measurement to make sure it's within that.
Well, you get a, I mean, everybody gets a letter from my surveyor saying, yes, it's there, right? I mean, I do.
Well, it still sounds like we need to clarify that because it could be, it could be a good six inches. If you do some kind of fascia and some trim and some, you know, brick, whatever, you know, and then you're talking about you've just taken a foot off of your setbacks total. So it might not be a big issue, but I, we probably should maybe clarify the definition of face like Kristen brought up in the new code to just make it clear. And if there's wiggle room, maybe we could define that somehow.
I have operated with the same guidelines that you are talking about, which is face of foundation. Um, possibly, you know, I've, I've discussed this pack, this question in the past and section sixteen eight dash one thirty references Eves architectural projections, accurate structures and covered porches. I don't know if, have you, that, that talks about going eighteen inches into the setback as long as it's not part of the structure. So if it's like ornamental or it's, and I mean, I've always maybe asked for some clarification as well in terms of how much, you know, like.
Yeah, I always thought of it as a structure.
What's ornamental, what's not, like.
A place where a little strategic ambiguity is good for everybody.
I think, yeah, obviously.
Are we all just pretending that cladding is a real word?
Cladding's a real word. But, you know, you got, you got Eves that stick out, like you say, you know, whatever that is, eighteen inches and cladding will change based on, you know, material use and insulation.
Yeah, okay.
I've never seen it as a, as a huge issue, honestly. Um, we've had some issues where the, the, uh, overhangs, the Eves have been considerably more than eighteen inches and, and we've addressed that.
Yeah.
Um.
Can I actually interject there? Like, how, how did that work? And, and that was kinda gonna be my question for builders. Is there a place where you could really take advantage of this and have like a six-foot projection off your foundation? Like cantilevered, some, I don't know.
No, I don't feel like, I don't think you could do a box window out in there. Like I think that's part of the structure would be considered not cladding. Like if there's a face of a wall, but like.
You're also saying you've managed this when it's come.
We've fortunately caught it at a pretty early time, but it was when the trusses had already gone up and we actually had required them to remove those trusses and make an adjustment, cause they went out something like three feet. And it was right up against, uh, you know, their five-foot setback. And so, eh, eh, we were tipped off by somebody, you know, a, a neighbor. So we did have to address that. Um, I think it's going to come up a little bit more when we're talking about, say, accessory buildings. It's more of an issue there, um, frankly, just, just for maintenance purposes. Um, because you've got a three-foot setback, side setback for accessory buildings. And if you're taking up a foot, that gets, that starts getting pretty tight for maintenance purposes and otherwise. Um, but to your point, um, i- it's just not something that we are putting a superfine tooth comb to. Um, if the question comes up, we will tell folks the setback is five feet to the, to the fascia.
Okay.
If we need to get more particular about it, uh, more specific about it and, and this body feels like that language needs to be included in the new code, then all ears.
Uh, yeah.
One way or the other, frankly, so.
Yeah, no, I think that kinda clarifies basically that, yes, we can continue to insulate on the outside of my building, yes.
It's gonna, it's gonna come up more because of the new building code.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of it.
Everybody's being required to build like, it sounds like you've been building for a while. But it would be nice to, to kinda know that, I mean, there's been kind of a standard, I think, of, at least my understanding of similar to what you described, like.
And you, what, what do you mean by how do the new building codes come into play here? Like require more insulation and?
Correct, so. And, and one of the key ways, in fact, in fact, if you don't put, um, continuous insulation on the exterior, you have to kinda make up for it with other things. So it's, yeah, it's, yeah.
I mean, it could be as simple as, as language, um, in that section that Kenny just quoted in the new code, a mention of something along the lines of up to six inches beyond the foundation, you know, for cladding and insulation purposes or something along those lines. I mean, that's.
Sounds like it needs clarification.
Certainly something that we could create some greater parameters around.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna make it complicated, but I think, yeah, maybe it's just a, maybe it is just a sentence in that, say in that section. But, yeah.
Okay, we can.
What section was it?
Once we see other problems that arise from it, we can add that in there.
I'll fast forward and miss it. Um, all right, if that's it, anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you for bearing with us.
Sixteen eight one thirty.
Sixteen.
Sixteen dash eight dash one thirty.
One thirty.
I know what you're, I know, I know the wording. I recognize, but I don't, go find it right away. I guess you just put it in there, now you just put it in the search. If I knew how to use AI.